Good evening Wakefield, welcome to the Town Council meeting of October 24th. It is 6:37 and I call this meeting to order. Let's do item two, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number three is attendance and all my fellow councilors are here today. Item four, executive session. We, let's take a vote to move into executive session. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Second, great. And all in favor?
Do you need to roll call?
I have to do a roll call.
Do you state the purpose?
Yes, I will read the purpose. Executive session, sorry. Possible executive session to discuss town administrator contract because an open session may have detrimental effects on the bargaining position of the town with the intent of returning to open session immediately thereafter. We had a motion and it was seconded by councillor Smith Galvin. I read the motion and I will do a roll call. Councillor Vincent?
Yes.
Councillor McLean?
Yes.
Councillor Dubrowski?
Aye.
Councillor Danahue?
Yes.
Councillor Chimes?
Yes.
Councillor Smith Galvin?
Aye.
And myself, that's unanimous. Thank you. Yes, if you would leave, we will be back shortly. Sherry, please stay on and Tom, please stay. Hello, welcome back to our Town Council meeting. We are going to go to item seven, which we have a public hearing.
Do you need a motion to open the public hearing?
Yes, please.
All right, so moved.
Second. Great. All in favor? Roll call, man, that's getting me today. We will do a roll call vote for a public hearing. Councillor Vincent?
Yes.
Councillor McLean?
Yes.
Councillor Dubrowski?
Aye.
Councillor Dillon?
Yes.
Councillor Chimes?
Yes.
Councillor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
And myself, yes. And it looks like you are joining us via Zoom. Hello, if you could introduce yourselves, that would be great.
Good evening members of the board. Michael Vigorito on behalf of the applicant for a transfer of liquor license, MP Ventures LLC. And I have with me here tonight the owners of MP Ventures LLC. This is Uberto and Gabriel.
Hi. Hi, my name is Uberto Melara. I, you know, try to get in line.
Just getting started, just sitting along right now.
Okay.
So councillor, do you just want to talk?
Sure, yeah. Well, I wasn't sure if we were just doing introductions or getting started.
Go, go for it, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. So, good evening again, members of the board. My name is Michael Vigorito and we've filed an application for consideration for a transfer of liquor license. And the entity that's looking to purchase the current existing restaurant and license, which is Massimo's in Wakefield, is MP Ventures LLC. And I have with me Uberto Melara and Gabriel Perez. And they're interested in considering purchasing the restaurants and serving liquor at this restaurant, hence the application. There's also an application for non-live entertainment and Sunday entertainment, just for soft background music, no other entertainment other than that. But they're looking to keep the concept the same. For the most part, it's going to remain an Italian restaurant. And they're just basically going to expand a little bit on the menu and the dishes that are offered. But otherwise, the restaurant operation should be seamless between the Massimo's that's there now and the restaurant they want to open up called Chow Amici. And all the documents that have been submitted to the board should fairly reflect that it's going to remain a similar operation, if not the same, which some minor cosmetic changes and some minor changes to the food that's offered. Mr. Piñeda is currently a chef at R2 in the North End. Mr. Melara also has his experience cooking as a chef in Italian restaurants, Paradiso in Swampscott. And their experience is extensive in working in restaurants, running restaurants, and with liquor, handling liquor as well. Leslie Foca Ruiz is sick tonight and she may have COVID, so she wasn't able to join us. So she's not here, but she also has significant experience in the restaurant industry. And all members of MP Ventures are going to be served safe certified and a continuing education courses in both running a restaurant, operating a restaurant and serving liquor. And both are at your disposal to answer any questions you may have with respect to the proposed transaction.
That sounds great, thank you so much. Welcome to Wakefield. Any questions from my colleagues? Councillor Dubrowski?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for this information. I guess the question I have is, I think you had mentioned that they were considering purchasing. Where does that stand? Has the business been purchased? Where are we in that process?
Typically in the asset purchase agreements that I do for restaurants involving a liquor license transfer, the purchase is contingent on the approval of the liquor license transfer itself and specifically the ABCC's approval as well. So a few days after the ABCC approves the liquor license transfer, we would meet with the sellers and finalize the transaction, have a formal closing, exchange keys and any other formalities that need to be done. So that it's all contingent on whether this application is approved.
Is it per se at this point, all the other terms for purchase have been resolved except for issues related to this license transfer?
Yes, the commercial lease, everything else has been resolved of the liquor license.
Any other questions? And Sherry, all the paperwork is as it should be?
Yes, it is. Yeah, fingerprinting is done and yeah, everything is in good order, yeah.
I guess, sorry, just wanted to, for Mr. Mullins. So, Mr. Mullins, are you comfortable with that kind of scenario where the sale hasn't actually occurred at this point?
Oh yeah, I actually think that's the norm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then I wish you the best of luck.
That's great. Any other questions? I think we're really excited. We welcome you to town.
We'll come see you soon.
We will, yeah, we're excited to have another restaurant in town opening up.
And R2's is my favorite restaurant in the North End, so it's...
That's good to know because the food at Massimo's is quite good. So you guys have some issues to fill.
R2's is where we always go in the North End, so we're excited.
That is great. So let's, do I have a motion for the transfer of the license?
So moved.
Second. Great. And all in favor? That's unanimous. Thank...
Sorry, you're on a Zoom meeting now, right? So I think...
Do I have to do a roll call? Because none of us are on Zoom.
Okay, then that's fine.
But I do think you want to ask for any public comments.
That is, that is good. So we did not take that good. Any, anyone else from the public who wants to speak?
I don't see anybody that wants to speak on the liquor license.
Great, thank you so much.
So, Madam Chair, I think I'll also make a motion to approve the common victueller license and new entertainment license as submitted.
That sounds great.
I will second that.
And second, okay. And so let's take a vote. All in favor? Aye. Okay, unanimous, seven zero. Thank you so much and we will see you in town soon.
Thank you, congratulations.
Very welcome, we'll be talking soon, Michael, thank you.
Should I close that public hearing before I move on to the next one? Okay, we're going to take lots of votes tonight. Do I have a motion to close that public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Second, great. And a roll call vote, councillor Vincent?
Yes.
Councillor McLean?
Yes.
Councillor Dubrowski?
Aye.
Councillor Tiddy?
Yes.
Councillor Chimes?
Yes.
Councillor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
And myself, yes, great. And now can I have a motion to open up the public hearing to set the tax classification, public hearing date for November 14, 2022 at 7:03?
Do we need to open a public hearing to do that? Or do we just...
No, just set the date.
Just set the motion to set the date.
Move to set the classification hearing for November 14, 7:03.
Second. Okay. And all in favor? Great, seven zero, thank you. I see members of department staff here today. Steve? Oh, public engagement, yes I do. Yes, I do. We will go back to item five, public engagement. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the Town Council?
Yes, Madam Chair, we do have a couple tonight. The first one is Eleanor Axelrod of 19 Sheffield Road. And she should be able to speak in one moment.
Great, and we'll...
Hi Eleanor, you just need to unmute and...
Yeah.
Hi Eleanor, and I just ask...
Hi everyone.
I ask that you introduce yourself with your name and your address. And just a reminder, public comment is not a back and forth and we ask people to limit themselves to three minutes if possible.
Okay, thank you. My name is Eleanor Axelrod, I'm at 19 Sheffield Road. I was actually hoping the committee at a certain point would hold a forum on the energy park so we'd have an opportunity to ask questions. I did review the last Town Council meeting video and I just had a couple of questions that I wanted to put on the public record. One was where, how is this location determined? And can it be built on open land instead of forest? I'm not sure that question came up. How much will it cost the taxpayers? I understand we are, we are retiring diesel generators, but I imagine there must be a cost with purchasing and installing solar panels and gas, natural gas generators. So I'd like a little more information on how much that will cost. And then finally, I guess, how many trees on, how much is coming down? And if there's a place where we can go and get more information? That would be amazing and helpful for us to make informed decisions as voters.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sherry, is there anyone else?
Yes, we did get another submission from Bronwyn Delavolby, Spire Street. I do not see her on though, she was on earlier, but she's not now.
Okay, our schedule was a little topsy-turvy today, so she comes back on. Can you let me know?
Absolutely.
Great, and then we will go back to our meeting agenda. Can we go to item 10? Is that okay? Great, so let's do item 10, heating ready. Hello, if you wouldn't mind just introducing yourself and your title and position and then really excited to hear your presentation.
All right, good evening, Catherine Dingra, Assistant Director of Health and Human Services.
Tom Walsh, Emergency Management Director of the town.
All right, so good evening. And can the folks watching see the presentation?
There we go. Great.
Excellent, thank you so much. All right.
This is the Wakefield Heating Support Initiative. With the levels of inflation we have now, the excessive gas prices and the supply chain issues we're having with the petroleum industry, heating fuel rates are soaring this winter. They're creating hard economic circumstances for hundreds of Wakefield residents. So we've come up with this plan, Catherine.
Sure. Which direction? Thanks Brian. Okay. And so what we're looking at here is really, we understand we have Wakefield Gas and Light customers. And then we have about 38.7% of our occupied housing units in Wakefield are not utilizing Wakefield Gas and Light natural gas to heat their homes. They utilize oil or maybe propane. And so that's a total of 4,150 unique housing units in Wakefield. And these units span across all spectrums of the housing sector, ranging from single family to properties that are in rented apartments. And so what we do know right now, according to Wakefield Gas and Light, natural gas prices have increased about 17% and electricity increased 30% since last year. And what we're going to show you in future slides is how much of a burden it is for heating oil. You'll see those numbers jump even more significantly. So heating oil energy burden, so for those 38% of homes that are using heating oil or propane, if we look at the bottom 30% of, in the economic scale for Wakefield residents, their heating oil energy burden can reach nearly 20% of their disposable income in the wintertime. So that's a significant amount. So what we can see on the chart furthest to the left is that bottom 30%. 20% is, represents Wakefield and then the other two represent Middlesex County and the state of Massachusetts. So the 20% of their household income is their energy burden. So if you think about it like this, so your energy burden is your annual utility bills divided by your household income. So if your household spends 2,000 annually on utility bills and your annual household income is 20,000, your energy burden is 10%. So if you can kind of understand, it's a significant amount for that lower 30% of our residents.
Examples of the heating oil costs increases which impact our local residents. The average heating oil price in October of this year is 530 a gallon. Last winter was only 320 a gallon, so we had an increase of 66%. So the average home in Massachusetts is about five gallons a day during November to April period. And so the 530 a gallon times that, 182, is $4,823 for that six month period. $803 per month this winter versus the $485 per month last winter, which is an average of $318 a month more than last year. And also the possibility is that the oil price per gallon, they go to as much as $6 a gallon. So that's something we're looking at now.
You know, when we were putting this presentation together, the costs for oil increased significantly just in one week from meeting to the next. So we are just really paying close attention to how this will impact our residents. And one other thing that we do know is our bottom 30% of Wakefield residents are really feeling the pressures of inflation right now. And this is reflected in our Wakefield Food Pantry numbers. And what we know is that the number of unique household visits, we saw a big peak in 2020, numbers came down in 2021. And then 2022, they've risen quite significantly again. And a lot of that's the inflation and costs that we all experience when we go to the grocery store. And it's really impacting those folks in our community right now. So we are fortunate in Massachusetts that there are some Massachusetts Heating Fuel Assistance Programs and certain residents in our community do qualify. So the most common one that people hear of is the Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program called LIHEP. And so that, the maximum limit to qualify for that is 60% below the estimated median income. So we've attached a chart of what that looks like to qualify, what your income level and number of households, number of people in your household. So that covers from November to April and payments range from $960 to $1,600. So when we go back and look at those numbers where we're seeing the average bill being over, you know, $4,000 for the winter, you know, $1,600 is wonderful, but there's still a significant gap there. For residents of Wakefield, Leo Inc. in Lynn facilitates the program for our residents. We are fortunate that we now have a coordinator of health or our human service coordinator, Jason Stone, is helping people with their applications along with our Council on Aging staff and Wakefield Gas and Light. So Wakefield Gas and Light has been referring to us and we are going to have a day where Leo comes out to the Council on Aging and folks can enroll in the LIHEP program. But we've already been assisting several residents in enrolling in that program. And then the Good Neighbor Energy Fund is kind of that next level up and that's facilitated through the Salvation Army and that's for folks in the 60% to 80% estimated of the state median income. And that's a maximum disbursement of $500. So still, there's a big gap there that needs to be made. But we are fortunate that we do have those programs and then we have the staff here in Wakefield to help many of our folks, especially seniors who might not have the ability to maybe get to Lynn or do other things, help them enroll in those programs. And then again, here's the chart. I think Tom has some handout, so you can kind of see that.
I'll leave it for the council, so you can read it better when it's on the full page.
So that's, that explains who's eligible for this.
So the Wakefield Heating Support Initiative, the application process and the criteria to qualify, residents must qualify for LIHEP or the Good Neighbor Energy. Funds to be eligible for Wakefield HSI. Qualifications would be reviewed by the Health and Human Services staff. Residents who don't qualify may apply to the Wakefield Emergency Fund for review. Checks will be made out directly to the energy providers. The Council on Aging, the Health and Human Services and the Food Pantry staff will help promote and assist with all applications.
So we actually looked at, the city of Arlington does a similar program and we looked at their application process and actually worked with Steve to create a, an application that would serve our purposes.
Okay, so the potential funds allocation. We took the bottom 20% income with the heating oil, applied a $500 voucher for it. So we come out with 830 households times the $500, which comes out to $415,000, which we'd like to use the ARPA funds. We'd be requesting the council to fund this with the ARPA money. And then also, we'd like, we don't, we don't believe this is going to be alleviated in one season. So we'd like to make this at least a two season thing. If we find that we have money left over in the first year, we'd roll it over into the second year and do it that way and then see what we need for, we'd like initially to have $415,000 for that first year.
And then just continuing for all residents of Wakefield, promoting energy-saving strategies and encouraging Wakefield residents to, through Wakefield Gas and Light, we have the relationship with Next Zero for energy efficiency audits for anyone in any income level and other recommendations such as installing programmable thermostats, replacing energy light bulbs and considering other options. So we know it's going to be a difficult winter for everyone and want to work to promote these other energy-saving services. So that's it?
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So questions from my councillor, councillor Chimes?
Thank you, and thank you, you know, to both of you, but also specifically to the Health and Human Services Department, the Council on Aging and the Gas and Light Department for working through these issues and doing the great work that we're doing to help residents. I think we, we all know and we've probably all felt in our own ways sort of how costs are increasing. So I think it's terrific that we've got the resources in town to help people identify those programs that they can always benefit from. So appreciate the work on that. And it's, it's great to see how our expanded Health and Human Services Department is tackling issues like this that we know have been a concern. I just had a couple of questions, just to make sure I understand sort of exactly both kind of current state and the proposal. So if I'm understanding current state together, so people are eligible either for LIHEP or the Good Neighbor Program? So it's that, that 0% to 60% of median income is LIHEP? And then basically Good Neighbor kind of covers that 60% to 80%? Okay. And is that specific to oil or is that any energy costs? If you had gas heat or electric?
Yeah, so people can apply if they're Wakefield Gas and Light gas, natural gas customers for that as well. So we have a number of folks doing that. So that's why the Wakefield Gas and Light will refer over to our office to have our social service coordinator enroll people that are their customers.
Got it, so it's sort of fuel agnostic.
Yeah. And that sheet will explain out to you what the breakdown is for the, for the families on whether it's propane or gas or oil and how the payment is made out.
Yep, no, and thank you for printing them out, they are very small.
Yeah.
So then the intention for this program, I know we've talked a lot specifically about oil, but this program would also be sort of fuel agnostic in terms of costs? Or it would be specific to oil heat, just given the higher level of increase there?
Well, it's the higher level of increase. We know Wakefield Gas and Light is not going to shut someone off. They have payment programs. Getting your oil delivery is a little different because folks are dealing with private oil companies. So we are, you know, the increase in that sensitivity to Wakefield Gas and Light is a known factor.
But if your primary heat source is anything else, if it's propane, wood, coal, you know, whatever it is, we would look at it. Because that's part of that program.
Got it. So basically the approach here is because we know we have kind of a municipal utility and we know that there are both legal protections as well as the fact that, you know, they just in practice won't shut people off, we'll, we'll really be trying to target those folks where we don't necessarily have those protections in place?
Exactly.
Okay, great. Now, this makes a lot of sense to me. I, you know, I think this is an issue that I think a number of us have been kind of worried about. So I appreciate the thought that's gone into the proposal and, you know, think it's, it's something that has a lot of merit and something that I'm glad we're considering.
Councillor McLean?
This screen that's up right now, it seems to me to maybe overlap with part of the proposal we got for ARPA funds from Gas and Light. Is this an additional cost element or is it just informational?
Yeah, really just to kind of highlight what Wakefield Gas and Light is doing to promote, yeah, the additional cost to this specific program.
So your proposal, if I'm correct, I'm just trying to, it's a lot add us quickly. So your proposal does not add anything over the $500 for the 60% to 80% of median income qualified people or not?
No, they, what happens is, once they're in that program, then they come into our program because they've been accepted by the state. So then what we would do is we'd give them a five, if they came to us, we'd give them a $500 voucher to whatever their primary heating source is. So as long as they're accepted by the state, because that's the parameter we set. It makes it easier for the accounting measures and for us for the paperwork to know that once it's been accepted. The state has a tremendous amount of money for the low income heating. They just got an additional 37 million in from the federal government when they just passed that, that bill that... passed that, that bill that extended the, the payments so we didn't go bankrupt the, the country. And the president put a billion dollars into low-income energy assistance. So, the state got an extra, an extra $37 million of that money. So, but we're just trying to put a little gap in because of, as we tried to show the examples of how much money, no matter what they're going to get from the state, they're probably still going to need some assistance. So, we just want to do our share, because part of the thing is, under the ARPA, this is one of the programs that they want us to do, is to help the low-income people. So, that's what we, we sat down and we did it, Mr. Mayo and Catherine and myself, and we started putting this thing together, was to try to, you know, help our citizens here.
Right. So, the $500 could go to someone who's under the LIHEP or the Salvation Army-administered program?
Yes.
So, it wouldn't be that someone under LIHEP would get more? They would, they would all be qualified for $500? Is that how you've got it set up?
Correct. We wouldn't say, oh, you're getting 200, you're getting three, you know.
Right. And who will actually be administering the program?
So, we'll do it in partnership with Health and Human Services. Once the qualifications, if they get qual, they go through the qualifications through the Leo program or Good Neighbor, they kind of do all that, that background work, and so we would facilitate the applications through our department, working with our IT to come up with a system so then, the, so we can have someone from our department overseeing those.
Okay. And, and your estimated numbers, do those come from, you know, 800-some people? Do those come from existing personnel, you know, people that you know of in town who already are, you know, qualified for these programs?
They come from the census data, so the census, we can really drill down and see who are the, the oil homes who are low-income. So, we drilled down into the census data for that information.
The census data will give you the income numbers that you need to know whether they're potentially qualified?
Potentially, yeah. These are estimates.
Right. I'm just trying to drill down on that relative, you know, there's a lot of competition for ARPA funds. I don't think anybody in the council thinks this is a bad idea. We're just, we're, we're, we're just trying to figure out, you know, you know, it might be a situation where, maybe not, maybe the council votes to fully fund it, maybe the council votes to partially fund it based on what we see come back, you know, in, in three months or something like that. We're just starting the season, and I'm, I'm not touching the oil button right now.
Yeah, yeah. And that's one thing that we would develop an evaluation system, so we can kind of see, understand the metrics of who's utilizing it, if it's seniors, and to get some, so, through the application process, that we get some metrics on who's utilizing the program, so we can be able to present some evaluation findings on it.
Great. Well, thanks for the work. That's all I have.
Can I jump in for one second? One thing I really like about this, the way it's set up, is that like, we handle the tax, tax breaks, you've already, people have already been pre-vetted, they've qualified for a state program or the Salvation Army program. So, kind of that level is, is done. It's not our personnel looking at, you know, making judgments on people's income and things like that. It's already done by a, you know, larger third party that's more set up to do it, so. And if someone has a, wants it reviewed because they don't qualify, we'll look at the regular emergency fund, and we'll all get together and talk about that. So, I think it's got some really good programs and facets of it. And as I said, I'm very worried this winter about our, our people because of these rising prices, and I think 530 is wrong. I think it's already a little bit higher than that a gallon, so, based on last weekend.
Yeah, and we, and we have seen some of those folks, those older folks in our neighborhood, in our communities, coming into the Health and Human Services and the Council on Aging, very worried about this winter, and just relieved that there's someone to kind of walk them through the process, and then to be able to provide an added support system.
And by working with them, you could have, see some people that are going to get 500 from us, maybe 1,600 or 1,400 from the state, so that's putting a big bite into their, their bill, so.
And the other thing, too, is now that we have Beth Greenberg through the Council on Aging and Jason Stone through the Health and Human Services, they're, once people come in through that process, they, we are also looking at what other services and what other programs across the state can we connect you to if, if, if the situation's really tight for you this year.
I'm, I'm gonna make some comments, and then Counselor Smith Galvin, and then Counselor Dombrowski, but just, just for my own clarification, LIHEP is, is not just for seniors. So, you know, one of the great things about Jason's position that, you know, we fought for, for five years, I'd love that he's going to partner with the Council on Aging. I'm going to encourage that we partner with the library and the food pantry and other departments, so it's not just seniors, because that, those numbers aren't just seniors, it's, it's other people in town.
Oh, significantly.
And so, I think that was something that, you know, we were really mindful of, of having that position work with everyone across town. So, just, just something to, to, to think about. And then, the other thing that I talked to Town Administrator Mayo about was, there would be that group, Health and Human Services with Tom and Steve, and the liaisons would be a part of this. So, whoever the Board of Health liaison is, would actually, you know, would get updates that then we would share. So, when you get that data from the applications, we would be able to, in, in almost real time, kind of get an update of who's applying and how much money is out there. So, just, just wanted to, to clarify those two things. Oh, and, and one more thing, sorry. And it's a state program. Is there a way that we could write a letter to our delegation saying, hey, is there a way to use ARPA money to increase kind of their participation of this? It seems like, I feel like every town should be asking for that, and there is a lot of extra ARPA money, and so maybe come January, we, we write a letter saying, you know, it would be great if you increase it a little bit because we're matching it, but, potentially matching it, but if you guys, you guys should be thinking about doing more. And I feel like I have heard that they, that, you know, it was one of the possibilities, so. And, sorry, Counselor Smith Galvin?
Sure.
I'm positive. I might, after you, I might come back.
This is, this is really great. Can, can I ask, how closely are you working with the light department? I know you, you certainly outlined some of the benefits and some of the programs they have, but will there be any kind of interaction between? And, and where I'm going with this is, it's great to pay for oil, but over the long run, maybe we can put a little more money in and move people onto heat pumps, or, you know, do some better energy efficiency. I mean, just, just kind of filling the gap, and we have to fill the gap, but I don't want to be here in two and three years when we could put another $500, $600,000, some of which the light department's already asked for in their request, to really, you know, make a significant long-term difference. So, I, I, and I know there's probably privacy issues and all of that, but, you know, wouldn't it be great if somebody got money from Wakefield and, and, you know, then was referred to a heat pump program or a energy audit, or, or something, you know, got a little more if they did some of those long-term weatherization, energy efficiency? So, I would just encourage you to look at something like that.
Good idea.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for this presentation. I think you, you both have been very thoughtful in, in the approach, and obviously, this is, this is an immediate issue that we have to deal with. I think one of the challenges that, that I wrestle with is the frustration of having to use local ARPA funds for this when we have over 2.2 billion at the state level. And I, I think it's, it's, it's patently unfair that a municipality needs to be picking up this lack on this, but that's, that's obviously a broader issue. We need to make sure we take care of our residents, and if this is what we have to do, it's almost like triage, candidly, and if that's, this is what we have to do, then we do it, certainly. But I think longer term, we have to really be looking at that, because there's, there's a real imbalance there when there's so much responsibility falling on the shoulders of a municipality for an issue that I think can really be better addressed at the state level if we're, we're better resourced to help our own residents, you know, across, across the state, and especially in this community. The other thought that I had is, is there any way, and I realize that, that we're talking about part, you know, market pricing, so we don't have a lot to give there, is there any way that we can leverage some certain providers, the safe fuel providers? I'm thinking of, of Black Earth and what we've done, and once you hit like so, so many residents, for instance, you get a bit of a price break. I know there's not a ton of give there, obviously, because we're talking about a commodity, but is that something we, we could explore as a part of this?
We, we had talked about that briefly before.
Had you?
If you pay by cash, normally you can get a 10% discount.
Right.
So, we would try to push that with any of the oil providers that we.
Because I'm kind of wondering if there's a way that as a town, we can try to leverage, hey, we have a lot of households that you can be filling, but there's some accommodations we could be making to, to realize some sort of, you know, savings.
We've actually done that with some of the emergency fund before, you know, and, and at least the 10%. Listen, I can't give you cash, town's not working that way, right? But, you're going to get a check in two weeks when it runs through our system, so we can at least get the, you know, the lower delivery cost. So, we can work on more. It's a great idea, this we talked about, yeah.
Because I, you know, I'm thinking about, I mean, like, you know, what businesses don't live government contracts because they know they're going to be, be paid for, you know, for, for that? So, I'm just wondering if there are other ways, and, and I, I appreciate that you've already thought about it, I'm just wondering what else we can be doing in that regard to try to leverage it, you know?
Absolutely. Yeah, and we do have a lot of energy providers here.
Right. And perhaps, you know, with some deference to even some local providers, you know, which again, may help, you know, our, our own community, or at least our, you know, regionally, you know, something, you know, some, some more positive coming out of it, certainly. Thank you.
Great suggestions. Counselor Dennehy, and then Counselor Vincent?
Thank you. I think thank you, it was really terrible to hear the costs, and, and I think about it, it's like about 62% of Americans live paycheck to paycheck, and so it's not only just a low-income population issue, it's really spread out, and I agree that if we can, if we can work with the, with the state to have some kind of partnership with them, or even a match, that what we're putting up, that they would match us, if we could try to do something like that. And then, also, I was thinking, although this probably won't work, but I was thinking is if, for people who might not meet the income thresholds, but will still be significantly hurting, if there could be some kind of a way that we could provide them with some kind of, some kind of relief? And maybe if we encourage, if, you know, maybe if we encourage, like, if they have an energy audit, that they could get some kind of relief, or if maybe an incentive to be installing a heat pump, that they could get a sharp discount? Is there anything that we can do like that?
I think the, the light department is looking into that, but we already have the emergency fund, so if you, if you weren't accepted under one, you could apply, and it goes through the town administrator's office for that request.
Mm-hmm, okay. But I do also agree with Counselor Smith Galvin that is like it's a long-term problem that really need to, and it's an, it's an investment to, for people who are paying for their heat, and then to say, okay, now you have to invest and pay in all this new equipment, that it's, they don't have the money to invest, so anything that we can do to provide resources for that, to provide it to houses, so that it takes care of that issue, I think is really critical.
So, what you're saying is that maybe if they get, if someone doesn't qualify, potentially, they would get like an energy audit and then qualify for?
Something like that, so that there's something, I mean, it's, it's, one, it encourages people to be more sensitive and sustainable, and, you know, it helps, I don't know, I'm just trying to think of solutions.
It's going to help them in the long.
You help them in the long run, but it's like, you know, if somebody's paying, you know, $1,000 a month on oil to heat their house, they probably don't have the extra money to say, oh, and I'm going to get a heat pump, and that's going to save it for me next year. They probably don't have that extra cash, so.
Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Your, your desire is to take the actual cost of heating and looking at the benefits they get from LIHEP or the Good Neighbor, and try to narrow that gap with a $500 voucher. But, since heating costs are going up, and they've gone up just since you did your preliminary documents to your final documents, how do you know $415,000 is enough for this year?
It, it may not be, but we have to start somewhere, so we try to use those numbers to, to correlate, to say, here's what our request is, and hopefully, maybe the people can get, get by this year, and maybe 415 will be sufficient. And if it, if it isn't, maybe we will have to have another conversation on it, but I think we have to have a starting point somewhere. And then, if we, if we don't spend the money, if we, if we only put out 350, we could then take that money and roll it over into next year's. I, I think it almost has to be a two-year program, because, I mean, everybody in this room knows, this thing isn't going to go away in a year, you know, especially, you know, 12 months from now, we're looking at the same thing. So, I, I think if we had a plan developed, and, and hopefully, we can apply to the state, I just feel that on the state side, they, I, I think, and I'm not sure of the number, 437,000 households applied, it was some, some high number. So, they're giving out, which is a lot more money than we are on some of these things, and even though they get, when you start multiplying, you know, 400 household, 5,000 households, times whatever number, it's huge. So, on our end, it's just that we know we want to help them, we know people are going to need it, and these are people, our neighbors, our friends and stuff, so we, you know, do what we can for them. And, like I said, that's what the ARPA money that we receive is really for, is to help low-income and stuff when you go through the, the final rule of the ARPA. That's, that's what they want to have, so the money gets back into the people who need it, you know?
To me, this is one of the top priorities for ARPA funds, and right now, we haven't spent much as a town in terms of the ARPA, ARPA funds that have been allocated to us. My concern is that if you come in next year with a request for additional ARPA funds, many of those ARPA funds that we currently have would have already been allocated to other purposes. So, my viewpoint is, I would actually be an advocate of giving you more than $415,000 now, so that you do have that set aside for this year and next year, and then if you find that you don't need that money, that could be returned and then given to, you know, to, to something else. But, I'm, I'm a little concerned that $415,000 may not be enough. Thank you, Madam Chair.
No, I appreciate that, and, and we're not voting on this today. We will be talking about ARPA funds allocation at our next meeting. I think for people, for my fellow counselors to come, thinking about where they want it allocated, how much we kind of keep, I do want to highlight that I think we have to allocate it all by December 2023, correct? Steve?
We have to allocate it, not spend it.
Allocate by December 31st, 2024.
Oh, 24, okay.
You obligate, obligate the money by 2024, and then you have to spend it by December 31st, 2026.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that timeline. So, let's all keep that in mind. Counselor Chines?
Well, I had two questions through you to Mr. Mayo, although one was just answered in terms of how this fits in with our overall ARPA strategy, so we'll, we'll wait on that one. We've talked a little bit, Mr. Mayo, about the, the emergency fund. Can you give us an update in terms of, you know, where we are in terms of balance in the emergency fund?
We have about $8,000 in the emergency fund.
So, perhaps you could share with us how people might contribute to that if they are so able and inclined?
People can certainly send a, a check to my office, at my attention, like any other gift that they would send in for emergency fund. We actually received a lot a few years ago, and we started people sending in money, so that's, that is the way to do it, yeah. Send it to my office, and it's about $8,000 in there right now.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And I, and I do hope it's something we talked about, that at the end of the year, kind of getting an overview of how many people were helped, kind of, you know, the issues, that would be great to do, I think, as we plan on being more targeted about who we use it for, so not, you know, just, just kind of broad of, of some of the issues that came up.
Counselor Dombrowski?
I would just add, maybe there's one final thought on this, and I know, obviously, we're talking about, you know, these, this idea of maybe preferred provide, providers, but I'm thinking about the folks who may not qualify for, for these state programs, but are still really going to be feeling the pinch, and is there a way that we could perhaps try to, again, partner with some of these preferred providers, to try to see if we can, you know, get a little bit of, you know, traction with them? Because if, I mean, if, if there's a truck going down the street, and they're going to every other house, you know, there's, there's incentive there, you know, certainly for them as well, so I don't know if there's a way we can maybe think about that. So, we expand our reach a little bit further to maybe folks who don't qualify for the 500 or under the state program, but are still obviously feeling it, because there's not a, there's not a household in, in this town that's not going to feel the pinch this, this fall and winter. So, if there's any way that we could try to leverage, you know, some of that, again, we, because we have, we have opportunities, potentially.
And we, and we know a lot of the, the providers.
And that's what, that's what I'm thinking. So, it's like, hey, you know, and then they become on the preferred, you know, provider list, you know, because they're agreeing to, you know, offer goodwill to, to our community. I think that that's, that's maybe another way we can look at broadening our, our reach and impact to, to more residents.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anything else? This was great, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want, I'm just trying to think, is there any federal government money available or any kind of emergency fund that, almost like? available or any kind of emergency fund that, almost like a emergency fund, like a hurricane instead of a hurricane, we're having a cold? I don't know. I mean, this is really, I mean, this is actually really devastating to a lot of people, not just, I mean, the impact of everybody and especially like renters who don't have any control over heating efficiency. My daughter lives in a big, huge Victorian that has high ceilings and rattling windows. I mean, she might be moving home. We hope that doesn't happen. But I mean, it's so, it's so, it's my big fear.
I think what the federal government did was give the money to the state.
Yeah. But maybe they need to give more. Maybe there needs to be more. Maybe then we can put more pressure on the state and on our delegation.
So I think writing our delegation and then also maybe sending to our congressional delegation.
I think so.
Of this is, you know, because I, I think, you know, this is a great solution and really creative problem solving. And so I think to share that also
Yeah.
would be really great. But, yeah. Thank you for that. That was great.
Thank you.
Catherine, before you leave, would you like to just do a little plug about the winter clothing drive that you are doing?
Oh, sure. So we are, so we, with the Health and Human Services, I do want to say, I think Jason Stone was going to try to be on, so I could introduce you to our social service coordinator. But he does have an office at the pantry twice a week. So he's there connecting folks. So it really is, we're
He's coming on now, Catherine.
All right, we can see Jason. We can take down maybe the presentation. Okay, we'll get him on. So just so you can put a, a face to a name, and what we're doing is really tracking everyone that Jason, not tracking some of the evaluation data of who Jason's serving, what, what connections he's making to people, for people enrolling them in SNAP, working with the LEO program. He's doing a lot of housing. So there's Jason at his home in Wakefield. So I just want to say hi to Jason. He's been great. So Jason, do you want to just introduce yourself?
Yeah, sure. Hi, everybody. It's nice to be here. As Catherine said, I'm Jason Stone. I'm the new social services coordinator for the town. I do live here in Wakefield. I've lived here for, I think it'll be 19 years next month now, most of those years on the west side. And yeah, we've, we've already started making connections with the Gas and Light Department and with the Council on Aging and, and have started the ball rolling with LEO to get people fuel assistance already. So the money isn't being galled out by LEO yet, but we're certainly knee deep in the application process. So those wheels are in motion.
All right. Thank you. And then the last thing is if we are looking for winter clothes for folks, especially some of our folks that are new to the Northeast for their first winter. So you can drop them at the Health and Human Services office or at the Americal Civic Center. So jackets of all sizes, boots of all sizes, backpacks, and believe it or not, umbrellas. A lot of people aren't ready for, a lot of folks don't have cars. So they're getting around without the protection they need. So thank you.
Thank you so much. And nice to meet you, Jason. We look forward to you coming and presenting soon.
Looking forward to it. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. That was great. Okay, moving on to, we are going to go on to item eight, regular. No, we're just going to go to eight. I'm, I'm going to do all that at the end. Sorry. Item eight, regular town meeting, November 19, 2022. I'm going to pass to Steve.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair. And if Victor wants to come up, he's going to jump in on one of these. So anyways, the warrant is closed for the town meeting. It's in your package for your, your voting on the warrant. There are six articles. So it's a fairly benign town meeting in many respects, which is, I guess, nice. And town meeting is on November 19 at nine o'clock at the Galvin Middle School Auditorium. So very briefly on the articles, you, you're all pretty much aware of them. Article one is a tradition, it's the normal article. It's kind of the wrap-up of the previous fiscal year. My report is in the package, I believe you received it, and it will be online tomorrow, tomorrow morning, if people didn't see. And this shows how all the departments fared during last fiscal year, which ended on June 30, 2022. And I'll tell you that our departments returned about 1.1 million to the general fund. Great job all around. And encumbered $2.6 million that is used in this fiscal year, maybe things were paid forward or what have you. I give you a very detailed wrap-up, or I give very detailed wrap-up of town meeting. I will tell you on the town side, the encumbered items are mainly capital projects that just didn't get done by the end of the year, end of the fiscal year. And maybe an audit in the accounting department didn't get done until the new fiscal year. So those are what are carried forward. School department, we would ask the superintendent who will give that. But it's a pretty cool report. I think I like it. I know you guys think I'm strange. And I am. But I do like that report. And we spent some time in it. And the accounting department does a great job on that as well. Do you want me to just keep going or?
I think
Wait till I get dropped. Perfect. Article two is, again, an annual article, and it is, you know, using free cash to balance the budget. Last year, we used two and a half million. This year, we're using 3.3 million to balance the budget. And the big, and the, and the reason why there was an increase is because Victor did not come through with the new growth numbers. And it's all his fault. No, no. The, the real issue is that the power, the, the power station on Montrose Ave, because utilities have some special dispensation, which I don't really understand why, they don't get taxed until it's fully up and operational. So that will happen either this, this year or later in 2023. So that money's going to come in. It's just a timing problem. So that, we anticipated being about 1.6 million, 1.5 million. So that'll be pretty good when that happens. So standard article, and I feel very, kind of very good financially where we are. Item number three is a fix-it article. And that is in an article that the maker of the article at the April or May town meeting in this fiscal year, took the capital expenditures out of water and sewer from receipts and not retained earnings. So that was completely the maker of the motion's fault. Doesn't affect anything because we were going to do that anyway. And as I've told my wife of 37 years, or she's told me, I'm not infallible. So that was my mistake, my mistake in the town meeting on that. Article four, which is a very exciting article. We talked about potential heat and heating relief to our citizens. Article four is what Victor's going to talk about, has to do with our continuation of the program where if some of our seniors did qualify for the circuit breaker, we actually, within the tax levy, matched it, which, what a great program for people. So Victor's going to talk a little bit about that and a little bit of a tweak we'd like to put on this year.
Well, for the past three years, well, we're going into our last year fiscal '23. But I'm going to help a lot of our Wakefield senior citizens. In 2021, we helped 164 people, and it costs the average single-family taxpayer $23. 2022, banner year, we kicked Redding's butt. We helped 250 people. Costs the taxpayer $26. And my numbers for 2023, we have 214 at a cost of $28. What this program does is if a senior receives the Senior Circuit Breaker or Income Tax Credit, their co-applicant is at least age 60, they have owned and occupied in the community for 10 years and have no other significant assets, we will match whatever their circuit breaker credit is. The maximum credit for 2023 is $1,170. So with everyone qualified, we will be shifting within the residential rate, a little over $228,000. That means you and I and all homeowners, we pay 28 extra dollars on our taxes to help seniors age in place and remain vital and contributing members of the community. Well, because we do this, the only way we can do this is through a home rule petition. They have a mandatory sunset clause. We can only do three years. So it's time for us to renew, hence the article we have going before town meeting. Steve and I are recommending one minor change to this to give us some preparedness. We've heard scuttlebutt that the governor has recommended a doubling of the senior circuit breaker credit amount. And we also hear the legislature has offered something too. But it never seemed to have passed anything yet. It's, it's somewhere in the halls, on someone's desk. But we want to be prepared so that if the legislature fails to act, we might be able to increase this next year. If they do act, we can leave it at 100%. And seniors will receive more of a discount than they've been getting. So it's kind of a mechanism so we can respond, but we can also pull back if need be to protect seniors because there is an issue with too much tax relief. To qualify for the senior circuit breaker, seniors have to pay 10% of their income towards local property taxes and half the water and sewer. Well, if you give them, say, a $1,200 tax break, okay, that's good, you know. And a lot of those seniors will continue to qualify for our program because they pay significantly more than 10% of their income. But seniors on the cusp. If that award were to be $2,000, people will get it one year, lose it the next year, maybe even lose it the following year. It, it feels funny. We have to almost police what we, what we're doing in order to protect the people we're trying to help. For the years I've been running this, basically, the target audience is about two-thirds of the applicants. Those are the people that pay significantly more than, more than 10% a year, and they always get it. The other third comprise the folks who are on that cusp one or two years and don't get it. So they drop out of the program. They are supplanted by new applicants. So anyone have any questions about the program?
Can I just have a clarifying question?
Oh, yes.
So when you say, sorry, between $23 and $28, that's per, not per taxpayer, per tax bill?
For, for the average single-family house, yes.
Okay, thank you. That was just a clarification.
Counselor Chines?
Just, first of all, thank you for continuing to advocate for this and the work. I, I think when you talk about the complexity of balancing, you know, what relief we would offer to make sure that people don't disqualify for other forms of relief, I, I just think it speaks to the expertise that you bring that's, that's really important to this.
I have a lot of help.
You do. But, you know, you, you, you know, you, you were the, the brainchild behind this for, for our community and a lot of others. And so it's, I, I, I'm glad that we're, we're moving this forward again. Just a quick question around the, the percentage amount. I see in the article, we talk about between 100 and 150%. I'm assuming that percentage would be set by town council as part of the tax classification process? Or is there another process we'd follow to identify, is it 100 or 120 or whatever the number is?
My recommendation requests that the Board of Assessors determine it.
Okay.
Simply because a lot of these applicants, they're at our counter, they are calling us, we have a familiarity with them. We also have intimate financial details on them that only the assessors can view. I can't tell you how many folks I went to their homes to sit at their kitchen tables, fully masked, to take application and make it easy. I just think it would be easier with the Board of Assessors to immediately respond based on data that we have coming in immediately.
No problem. And, and actually, as you were saying that, I, you know, was squinting to read the text on my screen. And it is very clear that it is the Board of Assessors. So thank you for humoring me on that question.
Counselor Dabrowski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for this, Victor. You, you've done tremendous work, you know, for these last several years. I've been so impressed every time you, you talk about this program and, and the impact it's having. And I've spoken to a lot of folks who have benefited from it. And, and it, it really matters to them. I mean, it, it's, this is not discretionary spending. This is how they're able to stay, you know, in, in their homes in a lot of cases. I think another piece to this is when we look at it in, in total, it's, it's slightly more on the average tax bill, you know, going up to $28. But a senior living in our community has low utilization by and large of our town services, too. So when you think about a house, a household that, you know, that may be a household of one, you know, they, they don't have children attending the schools, they're not making use of a lot of our other services as well. So I, I think net-net, the composition of our community by being able to, to keep seniors, allowing them to age in place, ultimately ends up being overall a, a cost savings for, for our town, you know, certainly. We can't, we can't have every household full of, you know, young families with three or four children, much like we can't have every household filled, filled with, you know, just, you know, seniors over 65, one senior over 65. We need that mix. And, and I think this, this preserves, you know, it preserves a lot, including people's dignity, to be able to remain in their home and, and, and age, age in place in, as long as they can. And I think that that's a really important element to this. But I think when we look at the bigger economic picture here, there, there's benefits to the town as a whole, not, not just the obvious, the obvious benefits to the people that, that are directly impacted.
I'd like to add, through the years, the cards and letters we get from folks, they're really, really heartening. And, you know, through these years, this wouldn't happen without the assistance of former town manager and Redding Barbara Lasher. Steve, they were my primary sounding boards, helping me, you know, figure out, you know, which way to go, what do we think we could do here. And, and more importantly, identifying the impacts that you just mentioned it. So a lot of, a lot of help and a lot of good people.
But you've been a big advocate of this personally, Victor. And, and you deserve a lot of credit for making sure that this has gotten through to where it is and where we are now. Because a lot of people have, have benefited from, from your hard work.
Team Wakefield.
Any other comments? Victor, can I ask, so you said 313 residents?
This year, it's 214.
Two, this year, it's 214. And, and so there's probably people out there that qualify that haven't heard about it.
Here's what we typically do. Letter goes into the tax bill due and payable August 1. We try to get a letter in there advising taxpayers of this. The folks at the Council on Aging, first Judy Luciano, first year we had this, I'm delivering sandwiches and applications, all around town. We all were doing it. And Karen Burke has picked up that mantle and has been instrumental, instrumental with the seniors, getting the word out. We also have it on the website. People are talking about it. I'll show up at your bridge club to talk about it. I'll show up anywhere in town. If you've got more than five people sitting there, I'll come out and talk to them blue in the face about it. So we get the word out there. And again, the best way is a letter in the tax bills that really, you know, helps people, that the senior newsletter. Veteran Services also will throw blurb in their monthly things when it, when the time is right.
I just wanted to highlight that you are continuing, continuously doing that outreach. So you're at Wakefield 101 this week for new residents to talk. And, and Counselor McLean said you were talking to everyone.
Well, there was, there was no room to dance at my table.
Next year, that's a little, that's a little delta for Catherine next year. Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The other thing, Vic, you and I have talked about this previously. When you do your evaluation to make sure that seniors continue to qualify for their tax credits, you even have to look at other potential tax credits for them, like disabled veterans who may be 65 and older. And sometimes the veterans want to have the cost of living increased on their disabled veterans' benefits. But you have to look at what impact they may have on their eligibility for the senior tax credits as well.
Exactly. We, it's one person in town. I have to look at this, an obscure state law. We can lower your tax burden, but we can't eliminate it. No matter how much tax relief you qualify for, say you're a veteran, you do a senior work off at the senior center, and you get this, and you own a small condo. Theoretically, we could owe you money. But there's a little obscure portion of the state law, I have to look at the low-value properties to ensure they pay at least 10% of what they otherwise would have paid for an annual tax bill. But yeah, when folks do come in, normally people start applying for this in August and September, the two months, because I need the numbers for October to talk to you fine folks about classification. But we are always trying to get folks But we are always trying to get folks in the highest-paying program that we can. We can grant this along with a state exemption, but we can't grant two state exemptions. But we are always trying to figure out, hey, you know what, I know you're a 10% disabled veteran earning, you know, or receiving an award of $400 a year, but you happen to qualify for a senior exemption at $1,000. My recommendation may be silly, but don't go for the veteran, go for the senior, it's more. So we're always constantly talking to folks and making the best recommendations that we can.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hey, thanks for the time.
Article five, Steve.
I think on Article four, very quickly, one thing that was very heartening three years ago when we did propose this, was how the the community embraced it. I mean, because people raised their hands to increase their taxes, granted $25 a year for their fellow citizens. It was really was was a great experience, and I think that it was great. Article five is the municipal light department easement for the microgrid energy park and to petition the state legislature pursuant to Chapter 97, as was explained, I think, when we had the presentation here. This article was deeded to the town and accepted the town as parkland, which I thought was kind of interesting, where it's a lot of rock, and I don't know how much park land could be park activities could be done on it. But so this is the energy, microgrid park that we talked about that would help both vocational school and the new high school as their backup energy supply, which would be mainly mainly charged by solar energy that are on the roofs of both buildings, and would also ask that the town council declare this easement area, this very small easement area, as surplus property, so we can go through the state process on that. And that park will be built without taxpayer funds, that'll be built by the light department. I think that was a question that we had before tonight. And as far as the solar arrays on both the high school, proposed new high school, and the vocational school, I don't have what the costs of those are, but they will be in both of those projects, and maybe Julia knows.
I I don't know, but but I think the points raised today were good ones, and I would expect that the light department will have to answer those at the town meeting.
They are on notice that this is there, although we're putting it on the warrant and sponsoring it, it's their it's their baby. And we are because we've got to go for special legislation, that's going to be us. The town council does that, not the light department. We'll be going.
So just to just to clarify the questions that were asked during public comment, should we should anticipate hearing answers from?
Oh, yeah.
Gas and light at town meeting on November 19th?
At at the latest.
Yeah.
But I will contact them tomorrow.
That's great.
Is there a way, I'm just thinking about this, maybe it's too late to do this, is there a way to limit the natural gas size to what they've proposed so that they can't come back later and add more fossil fuels?
I think the warrant's already been set, it's not in it, so.
Okay, but that might be something that on town meeting, we could.
Yes.
You could make an amendment to do that.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't think that's a big issue, but.
Yeah.
I would just like to make sure that if we're handing them an easement, that we kind of have control of what goes on there.
Exactly.
Okay.
The last item at item number six is the planning board, and that has that is their article regarding a bylaw in the renaming of streets. That's just on the warrant, that's not, we have no vote on it other than to put it on the warrant, which we shall do, whether we, whatever our thoughts are on it.
Counselor Demirovsky?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just going back to Article number five, since that presentation, I've really been thinking a lot about the the piece of the deforestation, and that really concerns me. I know that we talked about planting trees, or even planting more trees, but those are a lot of mature trees that we're talking about for that sighting, you know, where the proposed sighting is. And I don't I don't know what options there are relative to exploring how to potentially mitigate that, but, you know, I don't want to don't want to, you know, create one opportunity by destroying another, and, you know, that's that's a pretty amazing area up there with a lot of mature trees, and and I don't recall the exact number, but it was, well, it was three digits, 100 and 120 or.
And he said he was going to, they were going to replace all of them.
Replace all of them, but I mean, a lot, you know, a lot of those are not, you know, they're they're not saplings. And so the idea of, you know, replacing, it it's just not, it's not the same. And in that whole area, you know, it's it's around Breakheart, so I I think that that's something that needs to be given, and I actually agree with the resident who had commented tonight, and it's been on my mind ever since, because we're we're working so hard to try to have more plantings across, you know, across town with trees, and then to to take out that many, especially mature trees, is I think is is a concern.
Will that project go to Concom?
If it's in the Wedlands, yes. I don't know if it if it is or not.
I just think we should think about, I mean, if if it's a priority that is shared by my colleagues here, it's it's a significant concern for me relative to that, and and I don't I don't I think we we need to be able to figure out a better way to address that aspect of it if nothing else.
Well, and and I mean, what Counselor Smith Galvin?
Sorry. Sorry. And what what the public comment, I think it's pretty standard practice for, you know, a project like this, that I believe still has to be permitted by the state, which is what they told us, to at least present what alter alternate areas were looked at, and I don't know whether any other areas were looked at here. I mean, I'm I'm in favor of the energy park, absolutely, but I but I think there's some legitimate questions about location and removal of trees.
Except the fact that that can serve both schools where it is, easily.
Oh, no, I understand. I mean, there might be, there might be cost benefits in terms of transmission or distribution, but I don't know how close microgrids have to be to the actual physical facilities that they're supporting.
Tom?
Madam Chair, the the process would involve an Article 97 transfer of land from one purpose to another, and that would require that the MLD offer up some piece of property in return for this, which will be preserved for conservation purposes. And so ultimately, you you could even end up with a greater savings of trees than loss of trees.
If that's the end result, that would be great, you certainly.
And the state will require that, so.
All right. I I just think we have to be very deliberate.
Yep, I I hear that, and I think I think now this is kind of our almost third or fourth meeting in a row where we've discussed trees, Steve, so I I think to have, you know, the tree warden come and kind of talk about what the town looks like and what the policy is on replacing trees as they come down, you know, I would hate for mature trees to be replaced by saplings, and I know with the the, what was it, the micro, what, microburst that we had a couple of years ago, a lot of trees came down, and I know with our sidewalk were more coming down, so I I think that's a future agenda to kind of just overall trees, and this project being one of discussing. Any other comments on the articles?
Can I just follow up on your tree?
And I think I had asked last time to look at the process around tree removal as well in public, public comment.
Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to remind fellow counselors that the bylaw review committee also gave us something pertaining to warrant Article number six for for us to review, not for any decision today, just for us to review.
Yep, it was in all our inboxes, so for everyone to read that. Okay, so.
One other.
Oh, sorry, Counselor McLean.
One other question to town council, perhaps, at some point, we are going to vote, when are we going to vote relative to the transfer? Because once the transfer occurs, I assume they're not our trees anymore.
The transfer of land would first have to be approved by the state legislature.
Okay.
Yeah.
But we will, we will, we would, we would vote to put it on the warrant for town meeting to consider the transfer?
Well, the the that the transfer would be authorized by this article.
Yeah.
So it only goes on the warrant once. So you're going to vote tonight on the warrant. And if that warrant article is passed, then you ask the state legislature for special legislation authorizing the Article 97 transfer. And if that is approved, then you can actually sign a a an easement, a grant of easement to the MLD.
I mean, I I think we're, we're, you know, obviously, some questions have been raised. I think if you if you drive up the road up by the gatehouse there, heading towards what's, you know, the current voc, this land is off to the right side there, so I think the Gas and Light will have to be prepared to talk about that, but I'm not, I don't know how far it could be located away, so those are questions for Gas and Light. However, I don't see a lot of land down there that doesn't have trees on it that they could consider. So I I'm not sure if there are other viable options, but that's certainly something for them to address at town meeting.
Yeah, and I don't see any reason why town meeting couldn't place one or more conditions on Article five relating to trees or otherwise.
And just a reminder, town meeting is Saturday, November 19th, starting at 9:00 AM at the Galvin Middle School. So do I have a motion to approve, a motion to accept?
I would say a motion to approve the warrant, number one, but you can do that separately. Motion to approve Articles 2, 3, 4, and 5, and a motion to declare the Hemlock Road Eastman area as surplus property, which is part of the Chapter 97 process.
Can you get out of this?
You can do them all at once.
Yeah.
Sure.
All right, this is going to be a long one. So I move to approve the warrant for the November 19th town meeting, further move to approve Articles 2, 3, 4, and 5 as presented, and further move to declare Hemlock Road, the Hemlock Road Eastman area as surplus property. Did I get everything there, Steve?
Yes, you did.
Second. He has a second, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye, seven, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're skipping around a little bit. I just, going back to Item 6, a resolution, we, WCET had come to us to pass a resolution on Community Media Day, it's shared in your packet, I just wanted everyone to be able to see that. And now, moving on to Item 9, Veterans Memorial Field, I think two meetings ago, we discussed new signage that was going to be at Veterans Memorial Field. Sherry and Steve, did we get any public comment about it, or any?
We did not receive any public comment.
Great. So do I have a, do I have a motion to approve the new signage?
So moved.
Second. Second, great, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, unanimous, great, and that will be November 11th at 9:00 AM.
It will be an unveiling, yes.
Unveiling, is that the right word? Yeah. November 11th, Friday, November 11th at 9:00 AM.
Yeah.
Great, we did Item 10. Item 11, debt services.
Yes, this is a annual article, where, as the council may recall, that the first, the the million dollars that goes into our debt service fund, the first million comes right off the top of the tax levy, it was set up by legislative act when we did set up the debt service fund. I don't know, a long time ago, 25 years ago. It it really helped us, you know, you know, fund the Woodville, the 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 Dolbeer, the Public Safety Building Number One, Walton School prepares, so it's it's just really bookkeeping and accounting. So if I could have a motion on that, you do it every year.
All right, so moved.
Second. Great, and any discussion? All in favor? Aye, seven, zero, thank you. Item 12, appointments. We had put out notices for people to fills, for volunteers to fill some of the vacancies that we had, so let's go through Item 12A, appointments to the permanent building committee.
All right, Madam Chair, I move to appoint Richard Conway to fill the three-year term on the permanent building committee expiring April 30th, 2023, and Dwayne Hardaker to approve the three-year term on the permanent building committee expiring April 30th, 2024.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Since I'm the new guy, Madam Chair, if I could just ask a question, how do we evaluate which person to assign to appoint the three-year term expiring in 2023 versus the three-year term expiring in 2024? Is that based on recommendation from the permanent building committee only? Do we do our own evaluation on that? I'm just asking for edification purposes.
Yep, that's a great question, so we we ask the committees for their recommendations.
And and I can just say, as as the liaison to the permanent building committee, as a non-voting member, you know, Wayne has been a regular participant in those meetings, you know, very actively engaged, and so, you know, I I personally am comfortable with him being sort of appointed to the longer term, just given the nature of his participation thus far.
Okay, thank you for indulging me.
No, it's okay.
This is always a work in progress, so we are, we are trying to figure out the best way to do it, but that, when you have someone who is a non-voting member, it makes sense to move them up to a voting member. So we had a motion and seconded and discussion, all in favor? Aye, seven, zero.
All right, Madam Chair, move to appoint David Miller to the Sweetsler Lecture Advisory Committee.
Second. Great, any, any discussion? All in favor? Great, seven, zero.
Madam Chair, I would move to appoint Leonard Coughlin to the Housing Authority opening.
I'm going to go to the liaison for a second.
Okay.
Counselor Vincent?
Madam Chair, I'm happy to announce, this is going to be the first motion I've done in the six months I've been on the town council. But in consulting with the executive director for the Housing Authority and the Housing Authority, they've asked me to to move to table this appointment until our next meeting. The Housing Authority has a meeting on Wednesday afternoon, the executive director and the members of the Housing Authority are going to discuss both the applicants, and then, based on questions the Housing Authority may ask the executive director to ask the two applicants, she plans to do that, and then give us a recommendation, and then we can make an informed decision at our next meeting in November 14th. I know the Housing Authority meets monthly, and their November meeting is going to be after our meeting on November 14th, so with a drum roll, I move that we table the appointment to the Housing Authority to fill the state appointee term through June 24th, 2027, until our next meeting.
So Counselor Demirovsky, would you like to?
Well, I I guess I'm just curious, I know that Madam Clerk, or I believe Madam Clerk had followed up with the Housing Authority relative to this, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So I I guess I'm just a little bit unclear as to why they haven't acted on this, and I mean, again, this is something that we have the appointing authority, I, we can wait, I just think that, my understanding was there was not a lot of communication from the Housing Authority relative to this, to this. You would you would know better, Counselor Vincent, than I, but that was my understanding.
Well, I think part of the issue, too, Madam Chair, is that, recognizing, I can be, I can speak, is that they do only meet monthly, and the last time they met, the executive director didn't have an opportunity to brief the Housing Authority appointees on it because she didn't have the package for them at that time, so they didn't have a discussion on that last month. I think also part of the problem, and I don't mean to make this personal, is I was ill, and I missed that liaison meeting where I intended to talk about this. That was the one, if you remember, later that night, I had to Zoom the meeting here at town council, because I could not come into the studio. I frankly couldn't go to their meeting that earlier that afternoon, so I take some responsibility.
I don't think you need to, I just know that that, because I had asked Madam Clerk about some of these appointments, I know she had reached out to Housing Authority, I think multiple times, actually, relative to this, so, I mean, this is, it it's not crisis critical, certainly, but I do think that, you know, some more responsiveness is helpful.
Yep, so I think I think knowing that there's an active liaison that, and Counselor Vincent's worked with, the director of a plan that will vote on it, what was the date of the, at the next meeting or the meeting after that?
We can discuss, we. We can discuss, we, they meet on Wednesday this week.
Right.
So we will be able to vote on it at our next meeting, which is November 14th.
Perfect. So I, I think, I think that timeline works for everyone.
That's fine.
Thank you. So Bob put a, a motion?
Second.
Second, great. All in favor? Aye, seven, zero, thank you.
Great. I move to appoint John Sophia to the Fence Viewing Committee for a term ending April 30th, 2025, and Holly Lenhart to the Fence Viewing Committee for a term ending April 30th of 2024.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, great. Any discussion? And all in favor? Aye, thank you, unanimous.
Madam Chair, move to appoint Mark Young to the Veteran Advisory Board to fill a three-year term expiring April 30, 2023.
Second. Any discussion? Excuse me, all in favor? Aye, unanimous, great, thank you. And the Youth Council.
All right. Maybe just before I make the motion, Madam Chair, just to share some context for the Youth Council appointment. So we, we actually do have one open high school position and actually three open middle school positions, as folks may remember. We had advertised the four middle school positions back in the spring, only got one applicant, which was why we, we put it out there again. You know, I, I've spoken with, with Catherine Dingra a lot about this. Catherine, as, as everyone knows, is the, the adult advisor to the Youth Council. You know, our, our thinking is to fill the middle school position and not advertise for the other two openings at this point in the year, just given that they're kind of off and running, it doesn't really make sense to try to bring someone on in the middle of the year. But certainly, as we look ahead to the next appointment cycle, you know, the Youth Council itself has talked about, you know, doing more to engage with middle school students and even elementary school students. So they continue to build that pipeline up for, for the middle school folks. We do have one middle school currently on the Youth Council. If we were to appoint the applicant who we have in our packet today, that would put us at two, which is great. We also do, though, have a number of ninth graders, so at least there's not a huge age split between the middle school members and the high school folks. So with that, I move to appoint Dr. Mani, and I apologize, I totally butchered that last name, to the open middle school position. Further move to appoint Maya Pollock to the open high school position as a voting member, and also to appoint Olivia Wall and Sophia Panagetti to the Youth Council as non-voting high school members.
Second. Any discussion? Counselor Dubrowski?
Can I understand why the distinction of, so we had three applicants, why, why is it, Counselor Johnson, you're suggesting that, suggesting the voting member that you have for the high school position?
Yeah, so she, she's already done some volunteering with the Youth Council to date. You know, the, the applicants were all very good, she had a little bit more detail, so that, that's, that's the reason. There's a little bit more of a history there that, that seemed to speak to a, you know, a level of commitment that, you know, made me feel that that distinction was appropriate. Again, I, I, you know, the reason why I'm, I'm moving to approve the other two as non-voting members is I, I think there's value in having all of them participate. And we certainly did see over the last year a lot of great contributions from the non-voting members that we appointed last year.
But just to clarify, there was, the, the Youth Council itself did not make the recommendation, nor did Catherine Dingra. This is your personal?
No, I've spoken with Catherine, so she's comfortable with this recommendation as well.
Is it, is it her recommendation as well, or is it?
Correct.
Okay, we have a motion and seconded. All in favor? Great, seven, zero. Moving on to Item 13, warrants. Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we have three warrants. This is the last page of the materials that were provided to us, warrants Eight, Ten, and Twelve. There was no warrant for Week Nine, August 30th, nor for the 11th on September 13th. You will see that Warrant Eight is four point, almost $4.7 million. I'll just highlight that the major items there were the mass, the payment to the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority, health insurance bills, the Public Safety Building, the Wakefield High School feasibility study, and trash disposal. Warrant Ten was $5.6 million and change. The major ticket items there were the gas and light energy bill, $150,000 for the Broadway Crossing, and money for roadway paving. And Warrant Twelve was almost $7.1 million. The major, major items there were also the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority. We pay that 10 months per year. A debt payment, and green, the Greenwood roof, and also health insurance were the major ticket items for those warrants. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Item 14, approval of minutes. Do we have a motion to approve our October 12, 2022 Town Council meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second. Great. Any discussion? All in favor? Great.
I won't stay if that wasn't here.
Great. One, six yeses and one abstention, Sherry. Item 15, announcements. Do we have any announcements? Counselor McLean?
Just like people to keep in mind, the, I believe it's Saturday, November 5th, is the, Jerry's Run For All Ages, and it's fantastic race. Last year, we, we had people from ages eight to 92, and I was volunteering on Church Street, and the last person to come around and to do the 5K was a woman in her oxygen gear. It's just, it's just an amazing, amazing race. It's a big benefit to WEF, to the Wakefield Educational Foundation. They have cash prizes. They also age adjust. It's the only race that I will run in where they actually age adjust. So I've got a shot at something. So that's, that's a wonderful, wonderful organization. You have to be, I can't join it yet because you have to be 65. 64 and a half, so I'm almost there to actually join the, the group. But it's a great group of people, and it's really a great day at the lake. So that's Saturday, November 5th. Just wanted to put a shout out for that.
Thank you. Counselor Dubrowski?
Word on the street is, is that there is an election coming up. So I, so I've heard. So just to remind everyone, early voting is now going on, so please, you know, be sure to get out and vote. Otherwise, voting is on Tuesday, November 8th, at the Galvin Middle School from 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. And, and if you have your mail-in ballots, be sure to get those returned back to town, Town Hall as well. But hopefully you'll participate in, in our democracy. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Those are all being shy tonight.
I need you all to bear with me for just 30 seconds, so here's my announcement. Last Thursday night was Wakefield 101. Sometimes the naval officer in me doesn't go away. I traveled down to Washington, DC that day to visit my son and go to homecoming at my college. What I failed to do was to inform my fellow council members that I was not going to be in town. So therefore, since we had a table at Wakefield 101, I wasn't there to share my responsibilities, and many of you had to step in and take care of that for me. So I ask you to forgive me, and I assure you that that will never happen again. Thank you.
Counselor Vincent, that was completely unnecessary.
I was away too.
I appreciate it. I do, I do, so part of my announcements was Wakefield 101 was a great event, as always. It's something that I, I pushed to start a couple of years ago. I went to Mass Municipal Association meeting, and the town of Framingham had done it, and I went running to Steve during one of the breaks, and I said, we need to do this in Wakefield. And we had a two-year hiatus because of the pandemic. Over 80 families and individuals registered, and it, it is really one of the truly, like, feel-good events of, of the town. People are so happy, so appreciative, great conversations. The furthest person to move here, the furthest family this year was from Ireland. They chose to move to Wakefield. But people from all over, all different sorts of families and individuals, a lot of people choosing Wakefield because they're working remotely, and they want to run the lake or walk the lake during their lunch break. And then a lot of people working up north. So surprisingly, a shift from two years ago, people not commuting to Boston, but commuting up to Tuxbury, Belrika, Wilmington area. So it was a great event. Bob, we do it every six months, so you can, you will be there in six months, hopefully, but again, no, no worries. And Steve, pass on congratulations to Jen McDonald and Catherine McDonough in the chamber, who all helped put us on.
Great event, a lot of happy people.
Counselor Dennehy? Yes, that was a great event. We also had the master plan public meeting that was also fantastic on Wednesday night, and the survey, getting community input, if you weren't part of the public engagement, there's still time to take part in the survey, and you can find that on our town's website. And remember, this is your opportunity to have your voice in the future of Wakefield.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
I'm just going to my list. Just a reminder that we're composting the pumpkins on November 9th, so bring your pumpkins after Halloween to any of the elementary schools that morning, and they will be composted. And following up on Counselor McLean's, the Thanksgiving race is actually returning to Wakefield this year. It's being taken over by the Wakefield High School, I think they call themselves Cross-Country and Track Boosters now, but just look online, probably Wakefield High School or Wakefield Boosters, and you can find that. So that's always, we've had a bit of a hiatus. I think Maureen and I organized kind of an ad hoc one, and now it's back.
And it's only 5K for all you marathon runners.
And you can walk.
Finish it and be home in time for your pies.
And since it's in Wakefield, you don't have to go very far.
Counselor Chimes?
Sure. Just a few announcements. First of all, just wanted to highlight a couple of events coming up. The, the final Sweetser lecture for this year is this coming Wednesday at the Savings Bank Theater at 7:30. Our previous two conflicted with Town Council meetings, and so I, I know, I don't think any of us here have had the opportunity to go, but as always, they've had a great program, and I, I just, it's so wonderful to see the series back, back in action and back live. So thank you for that committee for all that they do. Friends of Lake Quanapawat is having their annual breakfast coming up on November 6th, if I'm remembering the date correctly. I think that's the day after Jerry's Run For All Ages. That's also a great event over at Bear Hill Country Club, so you do have to step a little bit out of Wakefield, but it supports a great cause and always great to, to get together with that community as well. The Wakefield History Museum is having open hours, and so this was something, when we did our liaison updates a couple of weeks ago, I, I know someone in the council mentioned they'd never been over to the, the West Ward Schoolhouse and the Wakefield History Museum there. And it really is a very interesting place to visit. There, there's a lot of great stuff to see, so encourage people to check that out. They've got hours on the Wakefield Historical Society website, but generally open are a couple of Tuesday evenings each month, as well as some Sunday afternoons. The ones coming up are the 8th, November 8th is the Tuesday evening, and Sunday, November 20th, and actually tomorrow evening as well. So encourage folks to check out that. And then finally, just wanted to wish good luck to the Warrior Marching Band. They've had a great season all, all year and have been doing amazing at all their competitions. They're actually heading down to New Jersey for a regional competition this coming weekend, so we wish them the best of luck and expect that they'll be as amazing as they are in Wakefield when they go down to Rutgers.
Great. Just two more things on my calendar, and then I'm guessing Steve has some events. One of his favorite events is the carved pumpkin at the library stairs. That is Thursday at 6:00 to 7:00. We thank the high school students who helped put that on, but check it out. It is one of the prettiest sights in towns every year. And then right after that, you can go to our tri-board meeting. That will be at 7:00 o'clock. You can join us in Zoom or in person at the Galvin Middle School, and that is our annual tri-board meeting with us, School Committee, and the FinCom Committee, Finance Committee. So just two dates on Thursday. Steve?
Just a couple of things. Yard waste pickup or leaf pickup is the 5th and the 19th. So if you're like me, woefully behind in your raking, maybe you can catch up this weekend.
Or you can leave them there to compost.
Or you can leave them there to compost, yeah. But I don't think that's going to happen. National Guard send-off is Saturday at 11:00 at Landhuguen Field, Saturday, 10/29. If you haven't been to one of these events, they are very moving. They had one in Reading a few years ago that they invited me to attend. It was very nice. And finally, this is kind of a, another one of these cool things that happen in Wakefield. Apparently, there is an HBO show on Julia Child, which I have not seen.
Yes, oh, it's wonderful.
It is, okay, it's wonderful. Well, they're going to be filming at Wakefield Bowlerdome on November 4th, because apparently at some point, Julia Child went bowling and looking for a period bowling alley, as we've had a lot of very cool filmings at the Wakefield Bowlerdome. I don't think George Clooney is going to be there for you, I'm sorry, but.
It's November 4th?
On, on Friday, November 4th. I don't know, might be an all-day event. They have one or two scenes there, so.
Who are our stars that are coming too? I don't know who's in the show.
Neither do I. I looked it up, but I didn't.
I feel like she's a friend. I don't know what her name is. It's, it's a great series. It is, yeah.
But the gentleman was very interesting on the phone from HBO, and he said to me, I said, really? He says, yeah. He goes, make sure they never change this. This is a great venue for us to film. It is vintage. I said, okay, I'll do what I can. I said, the bowling balls are the same. When I was a kid, they, they had dents in them and, and cracks.
Did you mention the trophy that you won?
I did not. That we won? Yes, I should have.
That we won, yes.
We'll have to go in there as extras with that trophy.
Yes, I love it.
So that'll be, that'll be fun.
Tom, any updates?
No, nothing.
And Sherry, any updates?
No, I'm not yet, thank you.
That is great, okay. And then Item Seven, oh, Item Number 16, matters not anticipated for agenda? Anything? Okay, and then do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Great, all in favor? Aye, thank you. We will see everyone at our next regular Town Council meeting, Monday, November 14th at 7:00 p.m. Meeting adjourned, thank you. Okay.